Okay, good morning, everybody. Today is Monday, July 10th, 2023. The time is 9:01 a.m. I'm going to call this regular term meeting of the P County Commissioners Court to order. We are physically located at the P County Courthouse, Commissioners' courtroom, number 110, 105 West Corpus Christi Street, Bevil, Texas, 78102. That was agenda item number one, the call to order. If everybody would please stand and join Commissioner Farias in brief prayer.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for all your blessings, for the rain that we've received, and for all that you provide for this county. We ask you to please watch over all the paper, all that we do here in this court, and make the best decision possible for all of our constituents. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now the Texas pledge.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Excellent. Thank you, thank you very much. We're on agenda item number four. This is recognition of visitors. This is not public comment. Anybody, any public member of the public that would like to make a public comment to Commissioners' Court will have that opportunity. This is agenda item number six, but we're not there yet. We're in agenda item number four. Agenda item number four is where we recognize visitors. To all of our visitors, repeat, first timers, thank you for being here. If you are desirous of getting your name on the record, you may identify yourself at this time, but again, it's not public comment. But there's no compulsion, you should not feel compuls-- I'm just messing that up. I was going to say, there's no compunction that you identify yourself at this time. But is there anybody in the audience that would like to identify themselves? Hearing none, thank you all for being here. Please come back anytime that we have a meeting, and if not, you can sit in the dark, that's fine as well. We'll move on to agenda item number five, Commissioners' Court, opening remarks. Commissioner Olivatos, it is your turn, sir.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you, Judge. Good morning, everyone. Sadly, the first thing I need to report out on is we had a fatality in Tynan involving a grain elevator. Very, very sad day on the Fourth of July that happened to be attending or was there. So I'd like to recognize, first of all, all the first responders, the fire, police department, all responding to the grain elevator to help rescue three of these individuals on our commodities. The response that we received from all the surrounding communities were unbelievable. We had people from Tynan, Skidmore, P County, St. Patricio, Alice, Orange Grove, Pettis, Corpus Christi, Refuria, Mormona, Sweeney Switch, George West, Lagarto, Sandia, Mathis, to assist with the collapse of the silos. It also should be noted that Mathis was there first, and also recognizing Goliad to backfill to Bevil so that Bevil could assist during the rescue. The other most impressive thing that I saw when I arrived was they had well over 34 DPS that were on site. They were working effortless to try and rescue these individuals. They were in full uniform, it was very hot. It was pretty, for me, pretty impressive to see how well everyone came together to work to try and save these individuals. Good effort by everyone. Also, we had to call in the Texas Park and Wildlife Game Warden, who actually brought in a search dog to rescue. Pretty amazing, if you have never seen one of those dogs work, on how well and how quickly the dog was able to found the third individual. This was a massive team effort. Everyone working very fast, as quickly as they could, to try and make sure that they could recover everyone. So awesome effort, everyone came together, great to see the unity on such a big event that took place in Tynan. Hopefully, we don't have to experience that very often. I don't know, I can't recall another incident like that happening recently or in the past. I'm leaning to the Commissioners, see if they're aware of any major events like that. I can't recall.
Not like that? No.
So also, I'd like to do some special recognition to our Sheriff Deputy, Robert Villarreal, who was the first one to arrive on site. Once he got on site, he made an assessment and quickly did, I believe, they called, all called for help, and immediately, everyone started showing up. Ryan, thank you very much, setting up the command center, very well orchestrated. We also had some assistance from Mike Willow. And then Ray Gonzalez, thank you for immediately getting all your equipment and your team out there to assist with the removal of the debris, the corn, that was in the way. I mean, for those that weren't there, just massive amount of corn. One truck, close to about 50 tons of corn. They probably had, in one of those silos, I'd say maybe 10 trucks, I don't know, of corn in one of those silos, just to give you an idea how much corn was there, how much product was there, and also, the weight of that was unbelievable, plus the dust. So, pretty impressive. And then one of the things that stuck out for me, Mr. and Mrs. Delagarza of the Bevil Fire Department, they orchestrated the rescue effort. Ms. Delagarza was pretty awesome, directing everyone to stay back, putting up barricades, and assisting in the rescue. I mean, she really, really did very, very well. Everyone did a fantastic job, was there. Yes, Robbie? Any questions?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Plus, there were many, many others that, just the numbers are there to hard describe how many were there. The individual that unfortunately did not survive, he was a 37-year-old male, his name was Sergio Jason Alvarez, and he was a grain elevator worker for many, many years. So his body unfortunately was recovered. The other two individuals, Ben Mingres, who was trapped underneath the corn, was rescued by three other individuals. When they got to him, he was already turning blue in the face, so they were disdently got him out of there real quickly, and just in time. He was air matted to the facilities. He had, from what I understand, a broken leg, some ribs, broken hip, so he did okay. And then the third gentleman, Andreas Martinez, who was also injured, I don't know the extent of his injury, but I understood it wasn't as significant as the other two. So, pretty sad event for the Fourth of July, not a great event, but, you know, thankful for everyone for responding so quickly, arriving at the scene, and doing everything they could to rescue these individuals. Pretty good. Judge, thank you for showing up, to judge was there as well. Some other activities that are taking place in Tynan, we put a hold on the construction work. The only reason we did that was because to allow the farmers to harvest their product, and so we put the work off till next week, so that work's going to begin probably next week. On a lighter side, and on the good side of things here in Skidmore, they held a golf tournament sponsored by the Skidmore Booster Club. Well-turned-out event, it appears they did well, don't know the final outcome of that. Awesome day, camaraderie with a lot of people, and at the end, what golf tournament I've been at, they actually had to have a shootout because some of the scores were tied, so it's pretty good to see. It was kind of almost like watching a golf tournament on TV, so very, very well done. Other work activities, we had to do some rework on culverts at the end of Corrigan Road. That work was completed, thanks to Ray and his team. So, thank you, Ray. So, those are some of the highlights, Judge. I don't, there's probably a few more things, but I think that's the highlight for what happened in Chris and Ford.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
It is Senator Farias.
Okay, it was a busy month. We went to, well, all the Commissioners went to the Commissioners and Judges Conference in San Antonio. Judge, I want to report all Commissioners present, and they were there last.
Right, yeah, take your notes. Is that it?
I got some overtime, though, that I need to take.
Yeah, that's fine, we'll take it out later.
So, they were all there, present.
Got a good picture for you.
I can't wait to see it.
The other, the Salary Committee met, and we had a pretty good long Salary Committee meeting for the recommendations coming up. We have that going there, which we'll see later on today. I did talk to Mr. Mercer several times, and our engineer had a heart attack, you know that?
No, I did not.
So, there was a little bit of a delay, because he was in hospital a few days, but he's back on track, and he'll be with us this afternoon sometime, or sometime midday at eight. No news on the GLO grant, I talked to Natalie Gonzalez, everything is still going, no news is good news, I guess, as far as that for our grant that was turned in on May 22nd. I had two brush calls, and the road and bridge took care of them, thank you, Ray. And then I had several calls on the Blanconia Fire Department, the fire chief over there, and Judy Gray are, they're registering with sams.gov, and apparently, that site is not being registered, but it's not uploading, or it's not taken, and that's what's holding up the check. They've got money waiting to go forward to buy the material, and I've got Congressman Flaut's office giving me an assist on that right now. So, they're trying to get that moving on. I met with Adaptive, with Gavon Flowers, and he's the one doing the work out there at BDA, but he's also taking a look at the Langley Building roof, which got skipped over last year, so we're looking at that. He came by and they took measurements, everything there, so we should have something from him at the end of the week. And then John called Bear Roofing for the Community Affairs, because I believe they're still under warranty, to try to repair that, that's continual problem over there. So, we've got that one going. And update for the BDA, Neo will be getting the project turned over July 31st, last day of the month, so at the end of this month, that project will be complete out there. They've already got a supervisor on the site, it's already working, and it'll be fully operational by the end of August. So that went really fast, though, so we'll have a groundbreaking for that sometime at the end of the month or the beginning of August. And I'll pass my report.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yes, Judge, thank you, thank you, Commissioner. Several little things, I'd like to start off with a thank you to an individual who's going to be retiring next Monday. Mr. Ray Gonzalez is going to retire again. He has over 40 years' service. I can't express how much the county is indebted to Mr. Gonzalez and his leadership. It's been fantastic, I've enjoyed working with you, sir. And Judge, if I could, if we could give up and give him a standing question, I would appreciate it.
Sure.
Commissioner, if I could add something real quick to the line? Ray has been awesome here as my mentor, to understand how the roads and bridge administrator works. He spent several days with me, really understand, you have to see the magnitude of our roads that we're actually taking, looking after, and the amount of work that's being done. So, Ray, thank you for your time, thank you for your effort, and aiding me to understand the scope of your work. Thank you.
Judge, you can't change his number, it's only different. You gotta be on standby at least for another year.
He won't, where he's going, there's no reception. That sounded ominous, I didn't mean it that way, he's gonna be fishing a lot, yo.
Congratulations, Ray. To move along, I've also got a shout-out this morning to our emergency management crew. Unbeknownst to a lot of people, we've been using that American Rescue Plan money, I feel very judiciously, and what the county did with the American Rescue Plan, with the emergency management, we've expended well over $100,000 for vehicles, state-of-the-art vehicle, the equipment with the vehicle, and it's one of those interesting situations. This is what we really need, but this is what I really want. We were able to go in between the wants and the needs, and if you haven't seen that new vehicle that they have, I think all it lacks now is the graphics on the side. You go put flames on there or something?
Something like that.
Something like that? But you need to see that. I think the newspaper's going to do a story on it once you get your graphics on there. But I think they're the envy of just about every emergency management operation in the area. When you see what they have, and they've deployed it a couple times now, and when you put that together with the trailer, the next thing that we put on there are some mobile repeaters, that way, all law enforcement can use that repeater instead of having to break a tower. And I commend Ryan and Rob, some of the ideas that they had putting this thing together, there's no way this court could have come up with those great ideas. It's fantastic. You need to see it, you really do. You need to touch it, feel it, and it's outstanding. Y'all did a great job, you really did. Some other little things, appreciate what the Commissioner Olivatos said. We were all at, our Texas Association of Counties meeting in San Antonio for a week, very interesting. Always glad when they're over, you can go and learn, and come back, and put those things into operation. Had a meeting in Mineral with about 40 folks, current events, so to speak. Commissioner Lenny and I were fortunate enough to attend the competition barbecue in Pettis, and I think your son Ethan was there also. I've never been at Blue Judge before, and just to kind of take you through what happened, we were there Friday, and it was chef's preference, or chef's delight.
Chef's choice.
Chef's choice, thank you. They decided what they were going to make, and we judged it. Okay, what you do when you judge, they show it to you, then you get to taste it, and get the texture, and it goes around from person to person. And you have these strict guidelines you have to go to, it's all computerized, we have a little computer we put it on. Okay, that was Friday. Saturday was the big day, and I'm thinking, man, we're going to check some brisket out here. But it turns out, yes, after you did beans, chicken, what was the next? Ribs, and then brisket. Now, that sounds great, and I was pre-warned that whatever you do, don't take real big bites, because there's multiple things you have to taste. So I knew beforehand, and it was excellent. We had 15, 16 different items we were testing, and I don't want to see the barbecue for a while, it was excellent. The people did a great job. We hung in there, we stayed for the whole thing. Some of the judges, they left, they had to go get new judges, I guess they had enough tasting, but it was good. And we didn't leave, we stood right there, we--
Did y'all successfully pick the winner?
Well, we're not sure, because it's all anonymous, it's all computerized, and I'm sure Commissioner Lenny, he stayed there after it was over with to find out how it went, and maybe found out how much was donated to the fire department. That was the whole purpose, was the fundraiser. And I have to do a shout-out to Melissa and Oscar Sanchez, they own the property, they put it together, they got all the donations, they had a pen, if you will, a cattle panel, cattle pen, that there were alcoholic beverages, but you had to stay inside that, but there were a lot of people there, everybody was happy, it went on flawless. It put Pettis on the map, and I think it's going to be a regular thing. The legislature endorsed it, it was a big thing, it was a big deal. I'm glad to have been part of it. And I think you and I signed up for the next ten, right? Okay, what else do I have here? Was honored to be a part of the Junior Ranger, Junior Deputy Graduation at the Coliseum a few days ago. It's interesting to see these young kiddos go through the training through the Sheriff's Department. They did everything, including they shot some firearms this year. So, they felt like they needed to expose them to that. It was fantastic, there were a lot of people there, I feel like it was real good at the Coliseum, it's been at the college before, I think it was better at the Coliseum, I really do. Everybody was on the same level, and you didn't have to walk so far to get in there. So it was very good, they did a great job. Then, just some, just an observation, if you will, you know my background is in economics and government. My various careers, state, federal, and now county, I've always tried to look ahead, three months, six months, or five years ahead of where we were to see what was going to happen. And here's what I see, and this is a little off the subject, but here's what I see economically. Large companies have cut back on their orders of cardboard boxes. Now, what does that mean? Think about it, the manufacturers that make cardboard boxes are reporting that they're not getting the orders for cardboard boxes from the big retail store. That means they're not planning on selling as much. I'm also reading where people that have four-owned Ks and all, 30% of them are having to tap into those to pay the bills. So looking ahead, six months, eight months, a year or so ahead, things may be pretty tight, just FYI. And on that positive note, I will pass to my Commissioner on the right.
Well played, Commissioner.
Good, Commissioner Lenny.
Moving on. Ray, thank you for getting some rug work done on Blueberry Hill, appreciate that. The constituents appreciate it more so. Also, congratulations to the Junior Deputy, I didn't get to attend that, I could switch patients around to be able to attend, but just want to give a congratulations to those kiddos for doing that. Also, like Commissioner said, Judge and the cook go off in Pettis. Met with Domingo, yes, he's going to give us some quotes for all the stuff at the expo. We met Friday and got everything written down and measured, all that good stuff, so he'll be getting with quotes here very soon. Also, to piggyback on Commissioner Olivatos's with the golf tournament, what was really cool about that was pretty much everyone gave all their winnings back to the Booster Club. And it was, it was a pretty good payoff too, you know? And there were people that bought things with the auctions and whatnot, and then there was side selling going on, and all those people contributed back to the Booster Club, so that was a pretty cool deal. They were, they set it up to where, of course, they're going to have a payout for first, second, third, or wherever, how many places they were, they were hoping that these people that won these places would just, y'all go ahead and keep it, and they did, so. I know that Skidmore was very happy about that. Also, last night, I want to thank Robbie and Officer Gallegos. People in the county just, they don't, they, I don't know what they think, but there was a lady that took a picture of a truck on Gil Ranch Road that just looked suspicious. Robbie got the call at like 7:30 last night, Sunday, so he gets out, he calls Officer Gallegos, they go out, they run the plates on the truck to the picture, find out, is someone over here in town up at Huntington or Hutchinson? They go confront the people, there was a man who let his granddaughter use the truck, and long story short, she lied, 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 until she finally came forward and told the truth. And both of the girls were cited by Officer Gallegos for dumping, and actually, anyone had dumped behind McCoys, and the truth came out. But the point is, there's people in the county watching all the time, whether it's a cell phone picture, or someone writes down a license plate number, something, someone is always watching. And you may get away with it a few times, but eventually, you're going to get caught. And these two young ladies last night, they got caught, and they got cited for it. I don't think they'll do it again, will they? But anyway, thank you and Officer Gallegos for taking care of that last night on a Sunday, appreciate it. With that, I turn it back over to you, Judge.
Wow, sure, you want to go?
I've got some for later.
Okay, anybody else? That was good, wonderful. I have to go with sentiments of Commissioner Olivatos. I think it's great, you know, and I want to give kudos to Commissioner Farias, he this week at the, don't get me lying, at the name of South Texas Judges and Commissioners--
Association.
Association, which is a very large organization that provides, I think, the majority of the Commissioners' annual training requirements, continuing the education requirements. Commissioner Farias is the incoming president?
Yes.
So, congratulations, thank you for continuing to represent P County in that August institution. Next year, when you're as your president, where is the Commissioners' Convention going to be? Don't say South Padre Island.
South Padre Island, Hawaii Shirts and Fit Pops.
So--
We're going to go there over there.
Yeah.
It's a tough job. Somebody has to do it.
That's right, okay.
Thank you, Judge.
No, that's wonderful. I also want to give a little bit of kudos, Commissioner DeWitt is too modest, he had, during the Junior Deputy Graduation, he actually conducted a lesson in how to properly give and receive a handshake, did an excellent job, had two poor young children up there that he was able to, you know, explain to the whole group, and they did a good job. They did a good job, very minor corrections, and then he and I were standing together in the handshake line, and many of the kids would come through and give me a handshake that didn't meet the standards that Commissioner DeWitt had just set, and then they would shake his hand, and he would correct them, and after he corrected them, not before, when they're shaking my hand, but after, they did a really good job. So we got to watch them go through and correct themselves, and so it was a fun event, so kudos to you as well for imparting that knowledge. That's right, yeah, that's right. Thank you for mentioning that, P County was honored, the Sheriff's Office, P County as an institution, and as a geographical location, and these junior deputies were honored by the presence and a wonderful rousing speech by Senator Lamontilla. Senator Lamontilla is our new state senator. She's from Harlingen, I believe, she has Victorian, South Texas roots as well, though, and she's been a great advocate for us, for P County, during her inaugural congressional session, and then her inaugural special session, and I think she's hoping that there's no inaugural second, special section, but session, but it all depends on whether or not the legislature can pass laws and get the work done that the governor wants them to. So, special thanks to Senator Lamontilla and her staff. Mr. Pereira was present as well for their presence and participation in that wonderful event. Is there anything else before we move on? Okay, then, moving on, we'll go on to agenda item number six, public comment. Is there anybody here wishing to address Commissioners' Court? Don't ask more than once. Moving on, agenda item number seven, the following items are of an administrative nature. Commissioners' Court has been furnished documentation on each item, and all such items may be acted upon by one vote without being discussed separately, unless requested by a Commissioner or County Judge.
I have a motion in a second.
I have a motion in a second, any further discussion?
Is there anything that needs to be addressed?
No, unless there's any questions?
Questions here, hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Moving on, discuss and consider action on the following items. Agenda item number eight, discussion regarding third citizens' trash collection station. Commissioner DeWitt, Commissioner Lenny, this is Gull's collective item.
Would you like to begin? Go ahead. If you'd like.
No, because it's just a discussion. We don't have to.
Yeah, I have it as an action item.
Oh, you did?
It actually is.
Okay, sure. That's fine. Go ahead.
We are getting requests for a third citizens' collection station. Now, government has got a bad habit of being reactive and not proactive. This is a chance for us to be proactive and get ahead of the game. Trash is not going to decrease, it's going to increase. Right now, if you live in Beeville, you either have to go to Mineral, which is a 15-mile one-way trip, according to Siri on your phone, or Skidmore, which is 11-mile one-way trip. So from here to Mineral and back is 30 miles to dump your trash bag legally, if you live outside the city limits. Okay. For those of you that don't have to do that, that doesn't sound like much, but that's gasoline, that's time, and you have to go to Mineral or Skidmore. This affects the people in Blueberry Hill. This affects the people out near Chase Field. And one of the people that asked me to look into this was Fred Stark, who lives out near Chase Field. He said he doesn't mind using these citizens' collection stations, but it's such a, it takes so much time to drive and you have to go and that sort of thing. And that's why we're looking into this. And we have a chance for the city and the county to work together on this. The county has no land to put a third collection station on. The ideal location is out near Blueberry Hill. The previous city landfill that was closed, I'm guessing in the 60s, was off Big O Road, which is out near Blueberry Hill. That land is still there, it's available. I think the city's in the process of prospecting, putting it up for sale. They're going to hold out so many acres. The county needs four acres to put this, this, this collection station in. To put it in, there has to be a ramp, some outbuildings, water well, septic system, shack where you collect bees, that sort of thing. Has to be put in. Electrical upgrades. We have the funds to do that. We can do that. If we were to use American Rescue Plan funds, we would have to hire an engineer, and Madam Auditor, correct me anytime I say anything wrong. I know you will. We would have to hire an engineer, and that would take a lot longer and more money. We've already done this twice. We did it in Mineral. We did it in Skidmore. And the reason we had to do it, and the reason we need the land from the city and we need for deed it to the county, not a lease, is we had leases on land near Skidmore and lease on land near Normanna. Rocked along for 20 and 30 years, everything went fine, until there was a change in ownership due to death, transfer, or whatever. The new people, Skidmore said, you know, really like working with the county, but you need to get it off our property. We lucked out. Commissioner Haggard found some railroad property that we purchased in Skidmore. We put it there. The next thing you know, we have a problem in Normanna. They want a one-year lease. Well, we can't just do a one-year lease and say, okay, what are we going to do next year? So we moved the Normanna collection station to Mineral. Now, the people around Normanna, man, that's a long way to drive. What they forgot was where the people from Pawnee had to come to Mineral, I mean to Normanna to dump. So now, it's, it's working better for Pettus and Pawnee and that area in Mineral. But we need to look at a third station. And we've made preliminary overtures to the city. The city is here today, and we're going to, I hope we can do some interaction here. And like I say, we have the funds to put in the collection station. Now, it's costing us about $175,000 a year per each station to operate. If we put in this third station, you can, you could triple that. It's going to be another $175,000. Right now, we don't have the funding to do that. And I understand the city might be thinking about, if we put in a collection station, they may shut down their station that they have inside the city limits. Well, if that happens, then those people will be bringing their stuff to the county collection station, will increase the cost even more. We have tip-off dumpsters at these stations. And when they're full, they come pick them up and they go dump them. Well, it's called a tipping fee. When they dump them in a landfill legally, there's a tipping fee. That fee continues to go up. So the next several years, those fees are going to continue to increase. But this is a chance. This is a chance for the city and the county both to be proactive, look ahead a few years and not look behind. Say, man, we need to do this now and have to go buy some expensive property or whatever. I'm hoping that the city will say, you know what, county? Since y'all are going to put this in and pay all this money, for $1, we'll sell you this four acres if you'll do the survey. So that's what we're hoping here from the city. And I know they're having a city council meeting tomorrow night. Commissioner Lenny and I will be there as a resource. And with that intro, I'll turn it over to my colleague, which is in your precinct, it's in your sandbox, but you asked me to help you shepherd it along.
Yes. I appreciate you getting a lot of numbers, Madam Auditor, for sharing with me the cost, the operational cost per year and whatnot. You pretty much covered it all. The, I know that a lot of the people in Blueberry Hill would be grateful that it's going to be, it would be out there and close by and whatnot. There's not a lot of other things to cover other than what you've already said.
Mr. Benson?
With the city on that.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I was just going to recognize John. John Benson is our city manager for the city of Beeville. Do you have any feedback or anything?
Up there?
Absolutely, yeah. You can, it might be easier for you. And again, I'm just going to open the floor question and answer session for commissioners. Oh, and Ray, if you need to pipe in at any time or chime in at any time, please do too. Otherwise, if you want to be heard, please wait to be recognized by me.
Speaking for myself, and as both commissioners said, it's on our council agenda for tomorrow night for discussion. Speaking for myself and city staff, I think we're very interested in exploring this option. But Commissioner DeWitt had texted me last week asking, what's our cost of operating our collection station? I don't have an exact number yet. With that said, I see there, from the city standpoint, a potential for either break even or depending on how we can work together and help save the county costs without increasing the city budget. We currently operate our collection station Monday through Friday, and then on Saturday mornings till, like, 2:00 PM or 1:00 PM, I forget which, the cutoff time on Saturdays. We have two people dedicated to that. So right, that alone is part of our cost. Our tipping fees, and I did think about this when we talked earlier, Commissioner, on the city contracts with Republic Services for our waste haul-in. So part of that contract is with our dump, our collection station. So that may be something we can bring to the table in a conversation with Republic Services to offset some of the tipping fees. Or we have a meeting coming up, it's a week from this Thursday, with our representative from Republic Services. And so that may be an opportunity to visit further about this idea. Recognizing this would be outside the city limits, and we just have to work through the details of that. So, but it's another opportunity. But if it makes sense for you guys to allow state residents to come here, I mean, I recognize that's a good point. That will increase the tipping fees amount brought to the county facility, but we can explore that. And I can get some information on how much the tonnage or whatever we collect on average per month or annually, however we need to break that down from our Public Works Department as well. So I think it's a great opportunity overall for the city and the county to partner together and improve services to everybody. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jim. Any questions?
Just a statement. One thing that I say, Mr. Benson, if we all agree right now, today, yeah, let's do this. It's going to take us a year to get it in place.
Right.
TCQ has to get involved. They have to approve the site. There's a long process. I know Mr. Gonzalez is well-versed in that, in what we got into in Mineral. And so if we said, yeah, let's do this, it's not going to happen tomorrow. And our budget, next budget comes up next October, and yours budget, when do y'all?
October.
October. So we would have a year and a half to get ready for this, so to speak, and get all the logistics and the financing involved. So I appreciate you being here today, and I appreciate the city willing to enter a dollar, sir.
Sure. Yeah. And you brought up, we own 68 acres we're looking at. We don't need, we have a survey of that property, but it was an active landfill where things have been buried, wastes, there were solid wastes that have been buried on that property where it is not. So as far as TCQ regulations go, I do know that for us to sell the property, there is some paperwork we have to file as the current owner with the county clerk's office. With that, but that's, as you said, it's just part of the process to work through.
How many employees do you have running the city?
Two. The city collection?
Yes.
Station, two. Two dedicated to the, to the collection station.
But you don't have any idea how much tonnage or how many?
I don't. Not at this point. I can, I can find that out from Alpha Bridge.
Yes, ma'am.
I, we had a question out, since some of the Blueberry Hill residents are city water users and, and, you know, patriots. Are they allowed to use the city collection station with their bill?
I believe that answer is yes. I need to confirm that, but I don't think our...
If you would, Mr. Benson, I got, confirmed it from Mr. Chin. The answer is no. They cannot use your landfill because they're in Blueberry Hill because they don't have the trash part on their bill. It's only the water. Two of your folks gave me a call. I'd asked that question. And they did say they could not use it.
You're stuck ahead of me with Mr. Chin.
Yes. And they researched it, and they said because it wasn't on their bill about trash, they weren't entitled to do it.
What is our, Ms. Cantu, auditor, what are our collection stations now? What do they cost? And what do they run? How do they operate?
So we have two waste management stations, and that is a total budget of $422,000 that it is to run those two. And we have a revenue line that collects about $65,000 annually. And those are on the two, of course. So you subtract $65,000 from $422, and that comes out to about $178,000 per station to run annually.
Negative.
Negative.
Well, negative but positive. We're going to pick that trash up one way or another. We either have it, they can bring it to us and pay us to take it, or we can pick it up on the side of the road. That's the funny thing about trash. You're going to get it one way or another.
And the fees are increasing. The fees are increasing all the time, like this year. Yeah, this year we had to raise our, our fees and some of the collections that were assessed on our, on our vendor from where they go and dump from that county. So I just want to share that.
So I strongly support the effort of getting another dumping station. However, the management mindset comes in as far as, you know, how are we going to pay for things that are hurt? How do we unite with the city? I think it's an awesome idea. Couple of things. I had heard that the city was looking at closing existing facilities. The reason for that would be?
Our collection station?
Yeah. Didn't I hear that we're looking?
There's a possibility, let me, if I could. There's a possibility if we do this one, we could partner with the city, and they wouldn't need theirs anymore, and they would save money on that one and be able to put it out.
Okay.
And then city residents would be eligible to dump out there as well as county.
Okay.
Yeah. We don't, yeah, that's correct. If that works out, and again, that's, the devil's in the details, as they say. We would not want to close our collection station otherwise for the reasons Commissioner DeWitt just said.
Okay.
We're going to be issuing more citations or picking it up elsewhere, or you guys will end up picking it up.
The second question is, you know, trying to unite the city with the county. And currently, it appears that they can't do any dumping because they're not being charged with it. Is that something that you see, there in this gap, that they could close and allow dumping to go there?
I'm not sure.
So if, if the people living in Blueberry Hill, they're currently not paying for the dump fee within their water. If that fee was to be added to their bill, whatever cost that is, I don't know, would they then be allowed to do dumping at your kind of station?
Yes, they would be. We'd have to amend our, the city would need to amend our contract with Republic Services for the trash pickup. That's what they get billed for is.
Do we know what that charge is?
Minimum of?
I'd tell them off the $25 to $30.
Per resident or per water?
And there's a but. There's a big B in this. A lot of people in Blueberry Hill have water wells, and they're not taking city water. So those people, it wouldn't help them a bit. I mean, you've got about half, from what I understand, from what I was told, about half the people in Blueberry Hill are on city water, and about half aren't. So that half that aren't, even if you force them to pay this fee, these people would still have to take their stuff to the county collection station.
So when generated, you?
And the thing of it is, and I know one of your enforcement people, Ms. Soto, she and I were talking, she takes hers to Mineral. She lives in Blueberry Hill, and she takes hers to Mineral. And she was saying it would really help them. And I think, Blueberry Hill is one area where you have a collection station in your precinct, I have one in my precinct, and we have places people can take it. Blueberry Hill, the nearest one, like I said, is Mineral 15 miles, Skidmore 11. Well, instead of taking it over there, why don't you just take it over here and dump it? Mr. Lenny and Rob will come pick it up. So that's what we're trying to get away from. And as our population continues to increase, trash continues to increase. So I think this is something we really need to look hard at.
So two, two other questions. Number one, you said we had the money for this. Where's the money coming from?
It is the interest off ARP.
And that would have to be a collective, a collective unify. Because when you say that it's saving the city money, where's it saving the county? Because where, where do we come into this? And that's what's a concern.
My other question is?
Third service.
Right. A necessary third service.
No, the idea is, is great. I just don't think that we have enough detail to, to take action on it like this. Is it sustainable in the next two, three, or four, five years? How is the city going to change their rules if they sell us this and want to convert over? How much are they going to contribute to the county for, for helping us pay our, offset our costs to get rid of the trash?
And those are the details that, when you make the sausage, we get all those details. Right now, we've got a concept on the table, and, and what I'm looking for is permission to go forward and enter formal discussions with the city. That's what I'm looking for. We've got to start. And we're here talking about it today. Everybody thinks it's a great idea. But the next step is, okay, and we may get to a certain point with the city where the city says, you know, I don't want to do this. Or this county may say, I don't want to do, that's fine. This is not something we have to do. This is something that I think we all feel like we need to do, but we need to flesh it out. And we need to, we've got to make the sausage yet.
Well, it's just like I had said in the last meeting, we need to get more information. Him wanting it as an action item wasn't to, to take a vote on, on doing this, it was just wanting permission from the court to go forward.
That's correct.
To get information from the city, get numbers from them, just a formal, you know, discussion with them. But to go back to what I said in the last meeting, it is a great idea. The, the thing is, we need more, we need more numbers, we need more, more documentation to show exactly, you know, compare apples to apples. And once we do that, then we better make an informed decision and then take action from that point.
One thing, we, I brought this back, this agenda item is courtesy to you two commissioners because you weren't here for the, when we had it on the other.
Thank you.
And it was a courtesy to bring it back so we could all discuss it. This is, this is a big one.
Mr. Gonzalez, do you have a backhoe and, and any, what kind of equipment do you have at each station? Does it come back to the yard? Does it stay there or what?
We have a backhoe that stays at the Skidmore collection station that we were budgeted for last year.
And the one in Mineral?
The one in Mineral, we, we bring it in as, as we need. We do have a shed there that, we usually have one there, but it's, it's not part of the waste management that we wanted to see. that we wanted to see. The, the backhoe is Skidmore, we're budgeted for waste management.
Okay.
These here, the, the bees in the mineral area, those are road and bridge.
So you take it off your road and bridge crew and take it, take it over there? Is that something else that we're gonna have to look at? Buy more equipment to?
It all depends on, on the size or what it becomes here. Would it be two times? Skidmore is bigger than Mineral as far as people want to, to dump trash. So that's why we have that piece of equipment. Now, if this one be bigger or less, I agree with Commissioner Lenny, he says we need more information. We would just have to look at it and see how big it would get. Would it be bigger than Skidmore? Then we would probably be able to.
If you had, if you had to, you could, you could reposition it, backhoe from Skidmore to here, take it back.
Well, the thing is, is if, if all this goes down like it's being talked about, the city is gonna go in with us and, and have the city go out to Blueberry Hill and you're basically close this one down. You could also take, use equipment from here needed out there as well. And at that point, this third facility would probably be the largest because you'd have your city people taking stuff out there as well, not just county going to Mineral or Skidmore at that point.
And to clarify, what the backhoe is used for, when you get the tip-off dumpster full, push it down so you put more in. Is that correct?
Yes.
You know, that's, that's why it's needed. And, and like I say, the city would have one. If we work out a partnership with the city, they're doing it now, and it wouldn't be a big deal to go another mile and a half out the big old road.
Okay, you kinda answered my question. So I guess two questions. One, have, in a past tried combining our facilities together with the city?
Not on, not this.
And second, sorry, second question, I guess, how do you think the city, people residing in the city would feel closing? Would they be open to it?
I think it's just, short answer, yes. I think it's just go and change and informing them of, instead of going here and you come up here now, and then figure out.
I know.
In the contracts of the city, it's free to residents. The city, I believe you guys charge a, a fee and how we work through those details. But I don't think it's, for a lot of residents, it's not that much of a difference in travel time to get to meet the road versus where it's minimal, minimal increase in travel distance.
Mr. Benson, y'all, the city's going to be communicating with Republic Services in the coming days or weeks. Do you know how long your contract for services with Republic is? And are you renegotiating a new contract right?
We are renegotiating right now, but I, but then I believe it's, it goes to 2027 if I remember right. Don't quote me on that, but I believe it.
That's okay.
It's not coming out in the next year. It's been on, I believe, two years.
See, we're with Frontier, correct? If I'm wrong, that's not more. Any Frontier?
Uh huh, yes.
We just renewed that a year ago?
Uh, I, it might have been two years. I think it's been two years.
Two years, okay.
That's significant cost savings. And that's part of the con, maybe some of the difficulty, the mechanics of this proposal is, you know, the, your city residents pay a fee which is pushed through their water bill.
Right, it's through their trash service that we-
Right, yeah, component of their, yeah, the little blue paper. And, and as a result of that, they have free, they can dump twice a month or once a month. There's no limitation as many times as at the city, whereas-
There's some property owners probably concerned they can relate to this. There's some property owners we wish they'd dump more often.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Don't start putting up barriers, but that's a practical situation is, but the rest of the county, if they wanna, and I believe anybody, whether they're, you know, in the, on Huntington or Hutchinson Street or out on 797, they can come to a county collection.
No, sure, it's restricted to outside citizens.
Oh, really?
It's on, it's on the sheet.
Okay.
And it may be where, I'm just talking or thinking out loud here, it may be where we collect the fee. If this works out, they should, the resident shows their utility bill. They don't get charged and then the city repays the county. What we collected, their applicable utility fees gets paid back to the county to make up for that cost. I don't, that's just one option.
Now, the judge brought up a good question as far as the amount of trips that an individual can make. I, I understood that was what, once a week or once a month?
To be honest, I'm not sure. I don't know that we tracked it that closely on, on their utility. It may be, I have to backcheck that. I'm realizing I should have brought my issue for each one.
That I would like to throw out though. Let's say that we can't get the mechanics in place for a city-county partnership on the collection station. We would still be interested in putting a county collection station on that four acre, period. We really would.
And that was sort of the, the whole impetus behind this is, if land is available, the city is also selling it, we need more collection.
I don't, I don't see a problem with that.
Okay.
Either way, whether we're partnering with you on the operation of that or not.
I got it. We can work through all the details. Absolutely. There's, there's nothing that we can't do together.
I, I do have a question. We do not allow commercial contractors to bring debris to our collection station, station, do you guys?
We don't either, no.
Okay. That's the one thing we run into, some issues with.
Those are, is the commissioner lady picks up? Yeah, lady picks those up. He and Rob. And then they, then they bring them back from Rockport to pick it up.
Right.
They really did.
And take it to the collection center.
And then take it.
Yeah, we had the guy come that dumped it, Alabigo. Actually, he was in Rockport cleaning up another site. Had him come back to Beeville right then, clean that up, and then sided him.
And they had him in handcuffs, but they, they gave him a little fleabait.
Literally.
I don't think so. Is there anything anybody in the audience would like to share at this time? Is there any motion?
Yes, sir. Judge, I'd like to make a motion that Commissioner Lenny and I be allowed to pursue discussions, formal discussions with the city and continue to flesh this out and get numbers and bring it all back.
Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any further discussion?
Interesting to see what that numbers look like.
Yeah, it sounds like a great opportunity. Thank you, Mr. Benson, to you and your entire city staff for considering this and considering working with the county. We really appreciate-
We have a lot to do to work with guys. We, we wanna do that. We really appreciate it very much.
Thank you for being here, sir.
If there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please indicate by saying ah. All opposed, motion passes without a dissent. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, gentlemen. Moving on, I gotta go back. Hold on.
Moving on to agenda item number nine, approved salary committee recommendations for B County budget fiscal year 2024. Okay, come on down, let us know. There's nothing in the package. Do you have something for us to look at?
I sure do, yes. Good morning, all. All right, everybody had a chance to kinda look it over. Good morning.
Give us just a second.
Okay.
We're looking.
Okay. Let me know when you are ready. You ready?
Uh, don't know. Couple more seconds. I feel like the Jeopardy theme song should be played. Ready? All right.
All right.
Please proceed.
Good morning, gentlemen. So the salary committee has met several times this fiscal year just to kind of hopefully increase some salaries throughout the county for this next budget cycle. And as you see below, there are some recommendations. These are just recommendations for the court to kind of look at for this next fiscal year 2024. So if nobody has any questions, I will start reading these off, if that's okay?
Certainly.
All right. So some of the recommendations we have are to pay out comp time for the sheriff's office and the jail with each pay period instead of quarterly payments. As y'all know, we do have these scheduled as quarterly payments and we wanna switch that to pay them out every pay period. This will be creating new line items to compensate for this overtime pay. Another recommendation is to increase dollar amount for some of the following positions. We have county sheriff, the sheriff chief, deputy maintenance assistant supervisor, and road and bridge superintendent, just to kind of bridge the gap in between the first assistant, I guess you could say, with the head. And in order to compensate for some new laws coming up, we have Senate Bill 22, I believe, for the county sheriff. So we wanna get ahead of that this year. Also along with that, to increase some of the salary positions around the county. And you see the list below, nine patrol deputies, 29 jailers, road and bridge crew, nine of those, and 12 road and bridge sign workers, truck drivers, and orphans, as well as the recipe employees, 92 county employees. This is to give everybody a sort of bump in their salary as much as we can muster for this next budget cycle. As well as an increase in salary for elected officials. 14 officials are getting the same increase as those 92 employees for that $800. And four JP positions are getting an increase at 5%. So these are some recommendations that our salary committee has come up with.
Thank you so much, man. Let me, uh, let me begin by thanking the salary committee. I know y'all have met a lot and a lot recently. So thank you for y'all's commitment. With respect, let me just jump right into Senate Bill 22. If we budget increases based on Senate Bill 22's opportunities, and so for the, for the public, Senate Bill 22 provides grant funding opportunities from the state of Texas for rural sheriff's departments, prosecutor's office, I think that's it, county attorney, district attorney, and sheriff's office, to ensure, ensure that the elected official, in this case sheriff, receives a minimum annual salary. The legislature, I guess, has identified that retention in law enforcement is, especially in rural communities, is, is a continuing challenge. As they, as they tie our hands fiscally, they also recognize that there's no practical way that local communities can operate with 1980's salaries, which is where many counties, rural counties in the state of Texas unfortunately are at, or practically are at. So Senate Bill 22 provides a grant funding opportunity in which counties can apply for these grant funds, beginning January 1, 2024. Right now, I, I do not know that it is a sustaining grant. It would, I presume it would last for the biennium, which is a two-year term, until the legislature got back together to decide whether or not they could continue the program. The, part of the, part of the fun legislature activities this year has been them trying to figure out what they can do with this great windfall that they have, right? They've got a huge surplus and so they're, they're trying to spend it all as much as they can, bless you, multiple times. Again, continuing, a continuing blessing. And, but the, the practical result is, in, in 2027, will grant funds be available or not for rural communities? And, and so if a rural county has increased its salary and reliance on what the state of Texas has provided, will we be able to continue to rely on that state funding? Or is that state funding going to be pulled, which will put the counties in a fiscally precarious position where restriction or reduction in, in workforce or services provided would be necessary in order to continue to maintain salaries at that artificially inflated level? So my question, my initial question is to the salary committee, is if we budget for these increases based on the concept of Senate Bill 22 and the, and the parameters that are set out within it, will we be able to qualify for a grant to cover those costs that we've already budgeted for? Or by budgeting for them, have we raised it on our own and we are no longer eligible for the grant process?
I just take a question.
At this time, I don't know what the grant requirements are. Either simply still-
Yeah, and that's true because the state of Texas hasn't, hasn't ordered the, the entity that's designed, that's designated. And who is it? Controller? Controller is going to come up with the parameters, but they have until, I think it's January 1, 2024 to come up with those parameters too. So we don't know. Okay. Any insight? Any, yes, sir?
No. I just wanna interject something on the, if we go to the sheriffs, it was at 59. This is like been a three-year plan. We've been, our plan was to get it to this point this year, whether Senate Bill 22 happened or not. Senate Bill 22 just happened to get in the way. And we're trying to close the disparity between the chief and the sheriff. So we got a chance to move to this point. And maintenance supervisor, well, we just, we're trying to close a gap a little bit between him and, and the department head. And road and bridge superintendent, if he takes over the position, if it so happens, he was at 42, the other was at 55, we can do $5,000.
Did, so then, I guess the, the, the next question would be, did the salary committee consider that potentially for this upcoming biennium, we may be able to add additional resources? Or will we be able to add additional resources under Senate Bill 22 for, because it, it flows all the way down to our deputies? I believe our jail is included as, as well-
We've been trying to push our jailers and deputies up a step at a time.
Yeah, anyway.
So this is the whole, I mean, this is our goal here, to try to get them up to that point. If Senate Bill happens to come into place, well, it comes into place. And some of those, not only patrol deputies, but lieutenants and sergeants and whatever graduate up.
Okay, so these, these numbers aren't-
They're not just based on-
Aren't based on Senate Bill 22.
No, they're not. They're not.
I'm sorry, that's what I thought, y'all, sir.
No, no. We were, we looked at it, but-
Well, it was, that was, that was, because it was part of our, our discussion, of course.
Yeah, it was part of our consideration.
I just don't know how to apply, so.
But, but these plans, like, like, starting with the, with the sheriff's position, no matter what. You know, they were 59 and then they went to, we got it to 70 because they were so grossly underpaid. And then our plan was to get it to this point. So we reached our goal as far as the, that point there. And he's on average with the rest of the sheriffs for our size counts. Okay? Chief deputy is still under, but that's what we could afford to do now with the rest of the employees. And then the eight patrol deputies, 1,000 each. So the jailers, 2,000 each to get them at least a little bit more. Just maybe try to get some retainerage in there. And do you have some final numbers on the bottom, what this total cost was?
I don't.
Okay.
I can, I'm only getting the-
This right here is 160.
Seventy-three or 169?
It was 168, I believe.
168,000. Judge, if I could give you some insight into Senate Bill 22.
169,600.
And, and one thing that everybody was excited about, it's gonna happen, it's gonna happen. Well, like you said, it won't happen till January 1. And the way I understand it, to apply, you have to apply the first month of your new budget year, which our budget year is October 1. So we can't even apply till next October.
Next year, or 24.
And they had a show of hands in the, in the audience. How many of y'all's year starts in January? And I think there were like maybe four, a greater hand.
Very few.
And they said, y'all can apply for it in January. The rest of it have to wait till you're, within 30 days, once your budget year starts. Now, the good news is by then they'll have all the details worked out. We'll, we'll know all that. And it's my understanding too, it brings whatever the minimum salary up to a certain amount. And then whatever's left over can be used in that department for equipment, for vehicles, for whatever. So it's gonna be good. And to reiterate what the judge said, at this point in time, we don't know whether it's gonna be continuing on or not. It may be a one-time thing and then, then all stuck with it. Because there's, it's part of that bill, you can't reduce a sheriff's office budget once it hits a certain amount. You can't do it. That's legislation.
Well, the salary committee's goal was to get it, at least move to this, this-
No, and, and, and I applaud what y'all have done. It's a good, it's a good job.
The other thing that they asked for at the sheriff's office was that to pay out the comp time every other week on their paycheck.
And that's, that's outstanding. That's the biggest complaint. You've heard me say this before, of surrounding agencies, when I talk to their chief deputy or their sheriff, that they hear from B County is that, hey, man, we gotta wait three months to get- hear from B County is that, hey, man, we gotta wait three months to get our overtime? Because what happens? Y'all have heard me say this before. I go home and I tell my wife, darling, I work 32 hours overtime this week, we're gonna get a great check. Well, a check comes in, she says, I thought we were gonna get a great check, she said it didn't change. Oh, we gotta wait three months. This is outstanding, I applaud y'all for this, I really do. This is good.
It's the committee?
It's like, it's like when you're teaching a class in school, you give the test, and you grade the test, and give the information back to them as soon as possible, it means a whole lot. If you wait three or four weeks, they forget the test. It's the same thing.
Quick follow-up question, Madam Auditor, do you know, what's your estimate on, or do we have estimates? We've got, all the necessary parties are in the room right now. We have our county appraiser in training still.
Yes, sir.
And we have our tax assessor-collector, and we have our auditor. What is our estimated, if, where are we at as far as increase in tax revenue options this year?
I don't have, I do not have that. I know that there's an increase from what we received initially from the appraisal district, right? There is an increase from last year, so I know I did see that. Of course, not as much as the previous year.
But that's just on valuation. That doesn't change our tax revenue.
Exactly, but it does, but that's, that is initially what we look at, to even see if there's gonna be any increase, because that's all I, that's all I have to look at. So what do you have, Michelle, to say? I don't know.
So I just, I just want Commissioners Court to consider this. And again, all the superlatives are deserved, but from a nuts and bolts standpoint, including the $160,000 payout fund that is being proposed, the total difference in costs that are stated in this sheet from last year to this year is $365,976. Without the $160,000, just the salary increases, the salary increase recommendation is $205,976. Our insurance increase, we were able to temper a little bit right, so it was gonna be $100,000 just to provide the same insurance that we had last year.
About 140.
Oh, 140, that's more than a little. $140,000, right? Big picture numbers, and, but we were able to reduce that, and y'all's committee did a great job too with that creativity. But is that increase still gonna be? Are we still gonna have some part of that?
It's gonna be some, it's probably gonna be maybe half of that, maybe even less than half, I guess.
So my question and my concern is, at this point in time, if we approve these recommendations, then we're going to provide these individuals, these important and valued elected officials and employees of B County with an expectation that the final budget is going to include these numbers at $205,976? Is that something that we can afford, or are we going to have to cut something else?
This is a recommendation. So it's just, it's just, it's just accepting that we're gonna work, we're gonna work with this, because we don't, we don't even know. And of course, in the salary committee, we've discussed that. These are just numbers until we get them to work.
Right, but from a, hold on, from a procedural standpoint, that vote is completely unnecessary. From a procedural standpoint, I do not need, and this Commissioners Court does not need to approve these numbers so that you can work them into the budget. If I say, work these numbers into the budget, then we start working those numbers into the budget. And we're having budget meetings on Thursday and Friday, which I would hope by Thursday and Friday, we'll have a good idea of these, and again, I hate even having these discussions, but these big number discussions, what, we don't know, we don't, you can't tell me what we're actually looking to be able to increase from last year. But you're asking me to consider a vote on approving additional expenses, which, to me, from a budgetary standpoint, are meaningful. That's not to say that we can't work around them, I don't know that. I just, if, I'm happy to entertain a vote, and, you know, the will of Commissioners Court is something that I value and I trust. Just saying, we approved this recommendation, the expectation from our employees and our elected officials is that this is, these are gonna be the new numbers. Are we ready to do that today? Are we ready to do that today? That is my question.
Let me answer your question this way. If we approve the concept pending final numbers of what we have here today, in other words, this all looks good, yeah, looks great?
If the budget allows.
If the budget will allow.
No, and that's fine, and that's all we're doing. I mean, at the end of the day...
The only one that doesn't change is the that. Yeah, because we've been paying that out every quarter.
Yeah, I know, I know, that 160, that's why I removed it.
That's the reason you got to build it right.
That's a hard, that's a hard number.
And the JP's are in there also, that we've worked that in the budget, so that when we come in on Thursday, those have been included, because that's what we discussed prior, Judge.
Well, I've expressed my concerns, but...
We can do no action, I mean...
The community, or the community, our employees understand that this is a recommendation, this isn't something that's necessarily going to happen, and I'm telling you right now, last year, when we started this process, the increase in revenue from 2022, '23 to '23, '24, sorry, '21, '22, '22, '23 was $300,000, right?
It was a little bit more.
What was it, 500?
I don't...
350?
I don't have that.
This is 300 and something.
I can tell you what the increase in salaries were, but I didn't bring them in.
No, 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 the actual revenue coming in, well, the practical reality is, we have a bucket of money that comes in, and we have spigots that have it all go out. And when the spigots are turned wide open, we don't have enough money coming in to cover that. And at some point in time, it's gonna become an issue, maybe it's not this year. But I'm happy to entertain a motion to approve this recommendation. Y'all have heard my concerns, and the practical reality is, I don't, I don't think it's necessary, but that's, and I hate to say like this, I've gotten worked up. I love what you guys have done, and I know you're working very diligently to try to provide something that we can, that we can get done. And so I completely support what y'all, what y'all are proposing, and I want to see us be able to accommodate these numbers. I just am concerned that we do this year over a year, we put the cart before the horse, and we tie, in effect, you tie the budget officer's hands with these numbers and this approval and this support, and if that's what y'all want to do, that's fine, but I'm gonna tell you, maybe not this year, maybe not next year, but when I'm gone, in five or six years, we're not gonna be able to do this, we're gonna have to be looking at constricting services, constricting the employees, because we're not going to be able to keep up utilizing the current method of tax revenue and the restrictions that state legislature places. Go ahead.
Yeah, Judge, thank you, a great analogy what you brought up. Also, I also, I guess from a business mindset, some of the things that you brought up are very, very valid. I think we all agree that people are our number one asset, without them, the county could not operate. However, I think it's also important to look at a short-term and also a long-term forecast. What are those dollars gonna look at? I mean, right now, we still don't understand what money's gonna be coming in, how much money's gonna be collected. Without that important piece, it's a little bit difficult to say how I'm gonna budget. You know, that's like, I wanna have a Lamborghini next few months. Well, I don't make the salary for a Lamborghini, so guess what, probably not gonna get it. I do like, Commissioner, what you brought up, is from a notional standpoint, should the funds be available to move forward with that? The recommendation has been brought towards the court, providing, I think that's what everyone needs to understand, providing that we get the infrastructure to pay out these salary increases. Without that, it may not happen, and I think Judge made that extremely clear. We want to give the raises, however, if we don't have the money to give it, it may not be able to do that. And it's an important piece, and we need to...
So maybe this wording, maybe the wording of the agenda item is just maybe not, you know?
I'm just concerned about the big number.
We can still approve...
Yeah, no, I agree, I agree, Judge.
Ending financing. We can approve the salary committee recommendation. I think they're outstanding, and I love this statement here, this will bring nine county positions to pass $30,000. Thank you.
That's a good one. Can we get confirmation, is that everybody in the county would be paid at least $30,000?
You know, the, the recommendation that Commissioner DeWitt brought forward, out of that list, we were able to hit, hit the 30 that Commissioner DeWitt had brought forward. That's why we wanted to, of course, add that.
I didn't include everything. They're, they're right there. I really, really appreciate y'all taking...
Out of that list, we were able to bring at least nine of those two that we found.
Out of the whole employee list of nine of them are up to 30.
Judge, I didn't know whether, I know this is a proposed, and like you said, if the funds are there, fine, I mean, this is something we'd like to see if we have the money. If we don't have the money, well, then we have to look at...
Commissioner, I would recommend your motion, say, approve the recommendations pending financing. And that way, yes, this looks great if we have the money, and it's approved, like you had it.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
I really do.
Or portion, because or portion that we've done before.
I mean, we might not have the funds, yes, this is, we've worked hard to get to this point, and we're trying to get everybody where they're supposed to be, if it's possible, maybe, maybe not. And like you said, we don't have an actuary for the next two to three or four, five years to figure out, with the state hamstringing us with all these regulations, whether we can afford it or we have to cut it for years. I'm smiling, because that was an awesome reference. Did you catch that, an actuary? Well done.
Judge...
I mean, that's, that would be great.
That's what happens when you get a president like that, you run his new term.
Oh, my God. No, I completely agree with that, just...
Yeah. Judge, and I think that I've asked the auditor, and she goes, she can provide last year's and this year's, but going forward, and a proposed, okay, what's gonna happen next year and the year and the year after that? If we keep with the same parameters that the state hands down to us?
We can't answer that.
Can we afford these things? Can we sustain them?
The legislature does.
And then the tax revenues hold, the appraisal is held, or are the collections? There's too many unknowns. And like, this is just a proposed, we'd love to see it, we're not where we want to be, but that's what we can afford as a rule.
And that's what we do annually, I mean, this submission comes in, but when we really get to the nuts and bolts and have the numbers, those revenue numbers, we can take some, or we can not take them, or we can cut them in half, or, you know, I mean, we work, we work with these recommendations like that.
Again, my point was, the expectation on the individuals that are sitting at this table is that we've approved this recommendation, and so it is, and that is not the reality. The reality is very, very different, and that it's not a necessary thing, it's more of an acknowledgement of the good work that's been done, but I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Judge, I'd entertain a motion that we look and consider these salary, the proposed salary raises that we have here, if we have the funds available in the county after we do our budget.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second, any further discussion? I don't mean to cut us off, but I appreciate it, obviously. If there's nothing further, I'll just indicate by saying no.
All right.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. Thank you, Jim, I'm sorry, I'm so sorry. I don't need to be real negative, I just ended up in that way.
Judge, and for the record, the committee members, our auditor, April Cantu, Michelle Bridge, Commissioner Olivares, Michelle Mattis, Stacy Anta, and our chair, Jennifer Reyna, and our consultant is Jaime Castillo.
Thanks, myself. All right. Thank you guys for everything you've been doing. Moving on, agenda item number 10, approve the award of request for proposals, RP number 22/23-009, data/ fiber service. Commissioners Craig Oliver, our IT director, is recovering from the flu, he is not president, not president, he's not present, and, he's not president either, but that's all the Commissioners say.
El presidente.
Presidente, he got a new nickname for the year. And, but he did, we have two quotes that came back, and Mrs. Cantu, if you want to take over, you're more than welcome to, otherwise I could just sort of...
Please, because I don't understand, there's no totals.
And we do have, we do have one, we have Ruben Netza from Foremost Telecommunications, Foremost Cloud Services, we've received two bids, one from his entity, another from Spectrum Enterprise, and I do have a recommendation from our IT director, but Madam Auditor, I'll turn it over to you at this point.
Okay, and I did, I did read Craig's recommendation, and my limited knowledge of this, because I have limited knowledge, and that's why we depend on Craig. So from what I see comparing our bids that we received, Craig in his statement that Spectrum came in cheaper than the other bidder, that would just be on one portion. So if you look at both of them side by side, you go straight down, and they're cheaper until you get to this one gig. That's when you see the difference, and then everything's cheaper. So you see that one G over here on Spectrum is cheaper than the one G on Foremost, and the rest are cheaper on Foremost. So it looks like Craig's recommendation is the one gig. So I wanted to bring that up, is that that's the only portion on all of this that's, that is different on the bids, which I don't understand.
So the overall cost of ownership back to us would be, the recommendation go to Spectrum? They provide better numbers.
Well, that's what, he wants to take this one gig number, is what he's saying, is what I understand from his email this morning.
Mr. Netza, we don't routinely have proponents of bid packages present in Commissioners Court, and I wanted to tell you how much I appreciate your presence, your willingness, and your interest in B County business by being here, and I'd like to give you an opportunity to make a presentation, if you so wish, and only ask that you come forward to the podium, identify yourself for the record, and then, please do keep your comments short, but you've kind of heard our thoughts, and we'd be happy to hear your insight into your bid proposal.
Gentlemen, thank you, and staff members, of course, of B County. The purpose for us to be here together is to allocate a number of dollar amounts for certain bandwidths. Today, you are currently a Spectrum customer with a very small amount of bandwidth, and all that would happen would then would increase the bandwidth to the fiber that's turned to certain sites, not all sites, but to a certain site. When I say that, some of the sites still have copper internet, and this is a true fiber conversion for all sites that we propose by companies. Currently, right now, the dollar amount that you're spending with Spectrum is a little higher than what would be allocated, and that is, right now, you have a 50M to each site. These numbers here that you see here are going from 50M all the way to one gig, and one gig is an overkill in my sight, you know, piece of equipment, piece of advice, to be honest with you, because you already have 50G, 50M, you're going to one gig. And if I'm not mistaken, the one gig, what we're logging at here is, I'm trying to actually work with what says here on the response from Spectrum, this is my error on the one gig, I provided 895, which should have been 695. I apologize, that guy, but that was my error, that's why I was coming here. It's 695, it's not 895.
And that's all the way down on your...
On all the one gigs that you see that are called later three. I apologize, however, everything else is more than adequate for y'all to start at the 200M or the 500M, which would be increasingly a big amount of savings towards the county.
I have a question.
Yes, please.
Looking at all these addresses, we also have fiber at Community Affairs, 210 East Corpus Christi Street, and I don't see them listed on here.
And the purpose behind it is, this was the only thing that was...
I understand, I'm just trying to figure out, y'all are separate, but you're on fiber down there, fiber optic, but I don't see them listed on any of this.
Is there a reason for it?
I don't, that's my question. Good point.
Well, they're in, they have internet. I mean, they have internet. All building internet. What were you asking, though, if they have what?
Well, fiber optics. And they have fiber optics, because I was on the court whenever it was physically run down there. Now, it could be it's coming off the courthouse, but I don't think so. I don't know. I know it's very important that they have.
It's not from the language of...
Yes, and I know that, of course, he has us all hooked up to the tax office, and Community Affairs is right there, and he has us all lined up, so I am definitely not the one... I can compare apples to apples, and I can see... I can compare apples to apples, and I can see numbers, but I cannot talk to what all of this means. So I don't know what to tell you.
There is at Community Affairs, yes. They, they physically ran, Craig and him physically ran a fiber optic cable down there and hooked them up.
Gentlemen, may I please?
Just-
Is this a private fiber? Could be. That means it's already been paid for by, by whoever provided it.
Maybe. We, we did, we, we bought it.
So that's your fiber. That's, that's something you're not paying monthly.
Okay.
So that means that wherever the tax office is-
Oh, we pay for it.
We're a participant. Okay. I, it just, I noticed there was one here that's on the-
I believe, I believe the sites here are the sites that currently, right now, receive a bill for service monthly.
I got you. Okay.
And so that's what, of course, was, was provided to, to our bidders, to let them know what our services currently are.
Mr. Netza, are there any other components of your bid that you'd like to present to the Commissioners' Court?
And, and again, the, the two gig and the one gig were just typo errors on, on my side, but mostly the one gig. Now, when we say the one gig, the one G, this is what they call a, a point-to-point. Think of it as a long extension cord coming from the tax office to that building, providing the internet. That's all it's doing. It's the main internet is the tax office, which is where the IT facility is at, and it's providing data of all sorts, whether it be video, voice, internet, or any other kind of data that we, they need a clock or any other services that you have, faxing, many other topics, but they're all provided through that point-to-point, that one long extension cord. So two gigs is good. I get it. One gig is great. But right now, you're working with fifty M.
So, so what you're saying, okay, we're at fifty M, so that, and you just said that that's overkill going to one gig. And just like anything else we do, we inch up the ladder.
I agree with you.
Are we willing to go from the fifty all the way to the one gig when we're skipping one hundred, two hundred, five hundred that you see on these, this bid package? I mean, we inch up on everything else. How is this, that's just my point.
And currently, right now, the fifty M, you're paying really pets over five hundred dollars, currently, as we speak. So why is it that you want to go from five hundred fifty M to one gig eight ninety-nine?
That would be my question for Mr. Oliver, because I have no idea what his-
I don't want it to be a surprise, but we're buying every employee in the county a PS5. It's a good idea.
Judge.
Overkill this.
Judge, there goes your surprise, Judge.
Gentlemen, my interpretation was, okay, we'll give the county two hundred and make it four times stronger, and save the county from the current over five hundred to three ninety-five.
Let me ask you-
I mean, save us money.
My latest question. Okay, right now, Spectrum, Craig, don't they own all the lines and everything?
So every company has the option of, A, being a reseller, or us, we provide our own fiber, as we do, for example, the City of Bville, the Bville ISD. We came into this city slash county and built our own fiber. So it's our own fiber.
So you would, where Spectrum would be servicing us now, you would bring your own fiber, even?
Brand-new fiber, brand-new ability.
Brand-new, okay.
To all sites, okay? Gentlemen, we also have George West ISD, we have Corpus Christi ISD, we have Hidalgo County, we have Laredo Boulevard ISDs. We have plenty of references. But in Bville, we just started with the Bville ISD and the City of Bville. As we speak right now, we already have turned up services for-
Oh, okay.
As we speak.
And so construction costs, I see that you have zero, well, both sides are zero construction, and of course, Spectrum would have no construction. But, so when you're saying that you'd have to build out yours, that would be at no charge to us.
No charge. Plus, we go the extra mile of no installation charges either. So construction is one thing, of going all the way to the building, coming into the building, putting the equipment into your mounting racks, your IT room, your IT area. We do that also, by going, going in there and leaving it all hot and live, ready for your IT guy just to connect.
No charge.
No charge.
Mr. Netza, if we were to table this item, could you be here when it's on the agenda the next time again?
Yes, sir, please.
Judge, I'll make a motion. We table this for further information.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to table this item until, when is our next agenda? July twenty-fourth?
I think it's around, I think it's the twenty-fourth.
I guess you can adjust your numbers.
Yes.
And that way, get them to the auditor. That way, we'll have the correct numbers, if you will, because of typo.
And again, I apologize. It's not, it's not quite the person that-
Thank you, thank you for putting it so-
Yes, Mr. Netza, thank you. So I have a motion and a second to table this agenda item until our July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three Commissioners' Court meeting. Any further discussion? Thank you again, Mr. Netza. No further discussion. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. This item is tabled until our next Commissioners' Court item. Thank you, gentlemen. Let's get back to the front. Agenda item number eleven, approve maintenance department's request to use the B County credit card for the purchase of uniform shirts from Academy or Walmart.
Move to approve. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Wow. She's getting, sorry, sorry, Mrs. Cantu.
Oh, I'm-
Be very judicious.
The, the guys need cool shirts. It is pretty hot out.
That is an understatement.
Yeah.
Moving on, agenda item number twelve, approve official bond for Laura Warnix, B County Elections Administrator.
Move to approve. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. All opposed? Motion passes without exception. We've got you for another year. Mrs. Warnix, thank you for everything that you do and that you're planning on doing through 2030. Moving on, agenda item number thirteen, approve order of appointment for election judges, two-year term beginning September one, 2023. Mrs. Warnix, would you like to make a presentation to the Commissioners' Court on this?
Laura Warnix, Elections Administrator. Good morning, gentlemen. These were the recommendations of, that have been approved by the Republican Chair and the Democrat Chair.
Move to approve. Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I'd only like to thank the volunteers that are willing to serve as our judges and, and central county station judges as well. They're paid.
They're paid.
It's still, it's still volunteer work. So if you're interested, if you're in the community, you're interested in getting involved, we want you to be involved. There's no part of our democracy that's as important as voting. And if you are interested in getting involved, please contact Mrs. Warnix. You can find her number at, Ms. Warnix, my apologies, Ms. Warnix, and you can find her number online at the B County website. There's no further discussion. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Okay. Moving on, agenda item number fourteen, approve recommended changes to waste management fee schedule.
Judge, if you will, I ask Rug Bridge to take a look at their fee schedule, bring it to the court so we can take a look at it, and very judiciously, that's exactly what they did. And they're leading it up to the court to make the proposed increases, if any. And if you notice at the bottom, on the tires, the price that they're charging on the tires is exactly what we're having to pay to have them called off.
That is correct.
So we're just passing them?
Yes.
Okay.
The, the only, the only, where, where we would not come ahead on that is where we have to get the, the illegal dumping of tires, then we have to put the deal in force. But other than that, it's just break even.
Now, I noticed on the, on the page that's in our packet, the, the dash box is under proposed increase. Do you have recommendations on any other of these charges? Okay, so no other recommended increases except under the tires, submitting?
Well, that's, that's not, that's what we're currently doing, sir.
This is what we're doing. The tires-
Oh, that's what we're currently doing.
Right, exactly. Whatever they charge us, we're charging.
We're moving forward. Okay.
And this hadn't been changed since, what year? Nineteen eighty-nine?
Yes.
And we're bringing in, Madam Auditor, sixty-seven thousandish.
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five.
From both.
Roughly.
What, what other counties or numbers stack up? I don't know.
We don't. We are low. I know we had talked about that.
The main concern, again, is the illegal dumping. You know, if you bring it up, will it cause more illegal dumping? That's why I really don't recommend anything there. Of course, it's up to the court.
Yeah, maybe get a little bit better information.
Judge, I'll make a motion to table this item and bring it back to the next court meeting. I think the Commissioners can take a little while to look at these numbers and check with some of the constituents and see how they feel and go from there.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to table. Any further discussion? Great, thank you so much for your presentation this morning, your time, and how you think that you've done for the county. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor to table till the July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three Commissioners' Court meeting. Then all those in favor, please indicate by, by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. I think that will sound better when it's written out in the transcript minutes than what y'all heard. Let's see. Agenda item number fifteen, approve memorandum of understanding authorizing the B County Sheriff's Office to loan a vehicle to the B County Agrolife Extension Office.
Move to approve with a comment. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve.
Judge, Commissioners, I, I don't know whether we all realize how accommodating our sheriff's office is with different departments loaning them a vehicle and what it does to their budget. This vehicle could be sold on the open market and money go right back to the sheriff's office, but instead, they're, they're wanting to cooperate and help everybody out. And, and I want to give a shout out to our sheriff, Mr. Southmaid, and Chief Deputy for doing this. They do it with almost every department that we have, and it actually costs them money, but they're being good neighbors to the other departments. And for that, I thank them, so.
Well said.
Is this a new vehicle or? No, it's got a hundred and fifty-six thousand.
Generally used.
Generally used. Little polished here, a little waxed, man, it looks-
Everybody's your work.
Would you take a moment and express to Commissioners' Court the purposes and your desire for having, to, to getting a vehicle? Because I think it's important that we understand everything that you're doing and planning on doing.
Yes. Hello, good morning. I'm Randy Shauer from the B County Extension Office. As you know, I do hold two parts to the county. I am a 4-H, I'm a 4-H agent, and I'm also the family community health agent. With that being said, we have currently a little over three hundred members in 4-H, and that's anywhere from second to senior in high school. My two-year plan is to double that. It's a very optimistic plan, but in order to do that, I need to be able to provide these kids transportation to camps and leadership labs and contests and competitions. This week alone, I'm taking a couple of kids to Edna. We've taken them, in the last six weeks, we've gone to, I think, four contests, College Station, as well as a three-day camp in Leadbetter, Texas, where I had to rent a van, which was fun. It was a great time. But with that being said, I think this would just really help, help our parents find it more feasible to be in 4-H, as well as provide me stable transportation and trainings and everything else along those lines. I appreciate this and-
One, one quick comment, since you are transporting children, please make sure the vehicle has the brakes and insurance checked out.
Always. Yes. Depending on this today, I does have an appointment at one thirty to get checked out. It's a couple.
Any further discussion? Thank you, Mr. Shauer.
Thank you all.
Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay. Agenda item number sixteen, American Rescue Plan ARP Status and Projects. Commissioner Lenny, Commissioner DeWitt, y'all have the floor, sirs.
Everything's quiet.
Great. Moving on.
You know, I printed out the information, and it's so tiny, that I think what I'm gonna do, Judge, is say everything is going like it should, and money is going here, and money is going there, and the court should be very proud of the things we've done for Pettis, Skidmore, the fire departments, emergency management, and everywhere in between.
Tynan.
Tynan, yes, Tynan.
Sheriff's Office.
Sheriff's Office. I feel like, I've said this before, and I'll say it again, we should be proud of how we have spent this, this windfall of money. And it's not over yet, but we've done a good job, and it's being appreciated, and I think it's been well-spent.
Well, thank you, both of y'all, and to your committee for your constant effort and work.
Mr. Mercer.
On the way.
Well, he's our, he's our ARP engineer.
He's our engineer. So on this agenda item, any-
Well, no, I mean, I didn't know if y'all had anything for him, because it would be, I mean, he's our engineer.
Mr. Mercer, we're on the ARP agenda item. Do you have anything you'd like to add on any of those projects that you're working on, like the emergency management?
Well, EOC would be the, the one, yes.
EOC is up for bids. This is the final plans for, for you set these here at the county.
Great.
Fantastic.
So we're on track?
On track.
The bids at Winter's, the bids do-
They just started. They just started this past week. They were just, yes, this is a rebid.
If, if you would, I brought that up at our conference in, in San Antonio, and there were a lot of groans in the audience, and they said, you know, we're having trouble getting equipment to those that are buying things, air conditioner compressors and all. So it's not just us. It's statewide.
Everybody.
Yes. And thank you for what you're doing. We understand you had a little medical thing, so thank you for being here. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Mercer.
Thank you, Mr. Mercer.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, agenda item number seventeen, Hurricane Harvey, Texas General Land Office, GLO Community Development Block Grant, CDC status and project update. Commissioner Pidius, Commissioner Olivares, you have the floor, sirs.
I talked to Natalie, our grant writer, and she says she hasn't heard anything, any response from our May twenty-second delivery date of our projects, and all four projects were just hoping, keeping the demo full.
Excellent. Do we, and we don't know, we don't have any idea when responses to those?
She's thinking of the first, first part of twenty-four.
Okay, and this was our grant application, in effect, that's, this was submitted-
That's what, that's what's going.
Four point seven. That was at Pettis Mud, Tynan, Silver Creek, and Six Thirty.
And there's no further requirements or deadlines for the county to meet, as far as we know at this time?
At this time, no. We're just waiting on, on them to say, hey, go ahead, and there's no particular order that they're gonna be addressed at. But whenever they get turned loose, then Hanson, is it Hanson?
Hanson.
Hanson Engineering is the one that took over, and they were the ones that ordered the project. They've, they've got everything ready to go.
Does this flow through, back through the CDCOG, or does it go straight to the GLO?
I believe it's GLO, because the applications are at the GLO right now.
Straight at the GLO.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you for that update. Yeah, absolutely. My comments to the other Commissioners tomorrow, I would go for y'all as well. Thank you for your efforts and for your community's efforts. There's nothing further. We can move on to agenda item number eighteen, approve Texas opioid settlement agreements. We have received three additional settlement agreements, proposed settlement agreements with CVS, I think Walgreens, and Walmart, and all the settlement documents and information is contained in the packet. Why don't we read out those numbers?
You want to read it?
Yeah, go ahead. Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, the three agreements that we have so far, Walgreens is payable over five years, twenty-eight thousand, three hundred ninety dollars and twenty-two cents. CVS payable over ten years, twenty-six thousand, eighty dollars and ninety-four cents. Walmart payable over six years, fourteen thousand, six twenty and seventy cents. And the reason they stagger them out over years, they don't have the money. So I'm gonna pay you, but I'm gonna pay you a little bit every year.
Checks in the mail.
Checks in the mail. The total of the three settlements is sixty-nine thousand, ninety-one dollars. Motion is actually the council's recommendation for the motion. I move that we accept the Walgreens, CVS, and Walmart settlements, that we authorize county official signatures on the order resolution of Texas's release and participation form, which would be our county judge, and that this scan and email the signed Texas participation and release forms to council. That is my question.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Ladies and gentlemen, this was a good meeting. Again, my apologies for getting a little worked up on the statutory component. I'm shell-shocked, that's it. I'm anticipating that as always. But I'd like to thank everybody that participated and gave their insight and all of our guests today. Thank y'all for being here. We have no executive session items. Moving on to agenda item nineteen, adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I have a motion to adjourn.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Very well.
Thank you, sir. Thank you all. Oh, I did want to say that.
On number 14, Spectrum, because I heard all the lines, and then I heard you.